I call to order the Lindmar School Board meeting here for January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The meeting of the Lindmar School of Board of Directors will be called together now at this time at five o'clock. Role call is now to be taken.
Director Buckholz.
Here.
Director Foss.
Here.
Director Mansour.
Here.
Director Maury.
Here.
Director Thomas.
Here.
Director Walker.
Here.
President Laow Lancaster.
Here. At this time, we will begin to receive the adoption, you have in front of you, the adoption of our agenda. I would like to make one moment and take aside, we need to amend the agenda with the removal of Danielle Patterson from the extracurricular staff resignations listing, as she was listed and included by error.
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of Danielle Patterson from item nine oh one Personnel on the Consent Agenda.
We have a motion by Barry and second by Britt. Is there any discussion? Seeing that there's no discussion, we have a motion and a second. I believe we need to approve the the whole packet. Now I can go? Oh, all right. So given that we've made our motion to, with that removal, I would like to have a vote on the adoption of the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Number three hundred, our public hearing. Right now, we will refer to Exhibits eight oh one, point one through two. A public hearing will be held, proposed to the two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven school year calendar, and updates to the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year calendar that was previously approved by the Board of Directors on December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Do you have your calendars in front of you? Is there anyone who has any conversation about said, right there? We'll wait this to this. Okay. Do you have any public hearing regarding this calendar item? That's what you want. Thank you. Sorry, clarification. If you have anything that you would like to speak to specifically, I believe we have one member that would like to speak to the calendar. I was right on that one.
Thank you. My name is Ben Pease. In relation to the district, I have two daughters in the Lindmar District and three nephews. And we cover the ranges all the way from kindergarten up to tenth grade. So, kind of representing two families today here at least. And so I have one, a couple of comments for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar. I know that one is not finalized yet, so one suggestion we had was swapping December twenty-first and twenty-second for June first and second, potentially to allow us finishing school prior to the Memorial Day weekend. So, that's the first consideration I would suggest. The second one would be to move spring break one week later to the twenty-second through twenty-sixth, then allowing the quarter to end prior to spring break instead of after. Those my only two comments regarding the calendar. Thank you for your time.
Very much. At this time, we will move on to audience communication. Oh, I have to close. Oh, sorry. I'm closing the public hearing on the calendar. Group effort here. Oh, my goodness. I just closed the, so number three hundred, public hearing is now closed. Thank you very much for your comments. Number four hundred, audience communication. At this time, the presiding officer will call those who have signed up to speak to the microphone in the order that they have signed up. The board will receive and acknowledge comments, but will not engage in a dialogue with the speaker because of the set agenda for the meeting. Your remarks are limited to three minutes per speaker, and you should be done in a respectful manner. At this time, I want to call up Anna.
Good evening. It's exciting to be here in the new administrative building in the new year. My name's Anna Kleimer. I am a parent to a high schooler and an alum. I can say that now. She's pursuing education, so I'm excited about that. So, being able to come here today, I really appreciate the time given to multiple agenda items. But as we kick off the new year, it's not a happy new year for everybody, so thinking about how we're supporting our immigrant communities and thinking about our call for advocacy and protection. As we face the new threats of potential consequences of mass deportation and family separation policies, it's essential that we as a community and district and you as board members and administrators stand united in supporting immigrant communities, especially local families. Our city and schools should always be a safe haven for all our children, regardless of their background or immigration status. Our role as advocates and community members is to ensure that our children understand their rights, can access resources, and their families feel protected and supported in a time of uncertainty. In light of the next administration's approach, my hope is that we can advocate for an inclusive, equitable, and compassionate practice and policies and support to safeguard the rights of immigrant students and families. Our schools and communities should be places where every child can thrive without the fear of deportation or separation from their loved ones. We must work to ensure that these policies are in place to protect students that are being questioned about their status and that they are not subject to any enforcement actions that will put them in danger. I hope our board, our city, and our, both of our districts continue to stand together to support our immigrant families and marginalized communities across Marion. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes our audience communication. At this time, we will move on to item number five hundred, our mission moment. The Board of Directors will share some of their district's recent successes. Does anybody wish to choose, wish to share?
Yeah, I have something. So, I just want to acknowledge this kind of cool thing that I didn't really know existed. But apparently there is, and I'm sure it happens in other classes, but the one I'm aware of, there's a visual arts class at the high school. And they did a project, and the students got to pick someone in the Lindmar community that impacted their educational journey, and their final painting was then given as a gift to that teacher. I didn't know we did this, but my son's teacher was selected. And he just came home and thought it was so cool because the student is a senior now. She had his teacher in fifth grade, and there was this whole story about how she still thinks about this teacher and what impact that teacher had on her all those years later. So, I just, I'm sure other members of our staff received similar paintings to that, and I just thought it was a really cool moment to show how we're continuing that connection long after they've left one classroom into another.
Thank you. Does anyone else have something to share?
So, I went to, right before break, I went to the, get into the Spirit Show Choir. I don't have a kid in the, in the schools anymore, but I like to go and support. It was so fun. The kids were so excited, and they are super excited about the new Performings Arts Center, which, you know, as a show choir parent, those seats get sold out within minutes. I was buying seven seats, and it took me about thirty tries and twenty minutes to book seven seats together. So, just wanted to share that mission moment.
I was at a Cedar Rapids Daybreak Rotary Meeting last week, and one of our students was recognized for their golf accomplishments, and they were awarded, it was, they were the second time all-time winner of their golf tournament, and had talked about what an amazing, not only golfer, but student and individual this person was. So I was very proud to have them represented as a Lindmar student at this Rotary.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have a mission moment they'd like to share?
Just adding on, our show choir fundraiser is this Saturday. And it's our largest fundraiser for show choir. There are spots to volunteer still available, so I would encourage anybody who can, who has time Saturday, just look up on the sign up and volunteer.
I'm volunteering there for most of the day. So if you see me, come say hi.
So just a clarification, I believe that Supernova.
Yeah.
And our Supernova is actually very well-received in our community and looking forward to all the different schools that will come here as show choir season has begun, and looking forward to, and we have our performance center and how that can be enhanced with Supernova as well. So thank you very much. But Supernova, you can find the signup list online for more information, and they are always in need of more volunteers. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I'll just add that, you know, we always ask, we always talk about parental volunteers in the district, and we have a lot of really amazing volunteers. Somebody turned my eye the other day to the PTO page for Indian Creek. And that is an amazing example of just parents who are engaged and doing amazing things. They've got some really cool videos that are pretty awesome, especially on their own, and especially coming from a PTO organization. And so just thank you to the parent volunteers across the entire district.
Thank you. It's lovely to hear students and faculty, as well as families, share their story of their experience and their, the way that that school is making an impact on their family and in our community. Does anyone else have a comment to share? If not, we're going to move on to item number six hundred, informational reports. At this time, I would ask for number six oh one, our policy committee report. I'm going to ask that you also refer to Exhibit eight oh eight point one. And at this report, this report is on the meeting that took place on December twelfth, the policy committee meeting. And I apologize, I had to be absent at that meeting for our family cause. But could the rest of the report please, team report please?
Yeah. So, we reviewed a few different things. We looked at the board member social media engagement policy, the board member operations manual, some policies from the IASB primer that was issued in September, policies on naming rights, gifts, and fundraising, and then several portions of the eight hundred series with, that are remaining are going to be taken up during the next policy committee meeting. So tonight, we will be reviewing the policy recommendations that came out of that meeting. And then just as a reminder, the, the language in green with strike through that you'll be looking at tonight is the current Lindmar language that's being recommended for removal, and the red language is IASB language being recommended for addition, both of which are to have Lindmar policy reflect the IASB sample policy.
Thank you very much. Is there another committee member that would like to speak to this? I think you named all the items that were up for this. I would be mindful that that group has worked diligently, and thank you for all their hard work, especially in the last several months on many of these policies. So thank you very, very much. At this time then, we will have the item number six oh two, the Marion City Council Report. I believe Britt, you were there on December nineteenth?
There was nothing on the nineteenth that pertained to Lindmar.
All right. And I have Barry, that you went to the December ninth or have a report for December ninth?
I do, fairly brief. The first item is, is there was an annexation that went through that's in our district, and it affected our board president and her family as well. So there'll be some houses going up fairly close to, to our district once again. And the second item, this doesn't affect our district directly, but I thought it was kind of interesting that they're moving forward with a committee to put a new aquatic center in Marion. And what was really interesting about it to me was the price tag on it. And this is something that will have to come to a vote of the community before it'll pass. So the old pool area aquatic center is going to be a park. And then they're going, this is going to be out near Highway one hundred. I'm not exactly sure where it's at. I'm sorry, not sure where it's at. And, but anyway, it has a forty million dollar price tag on it, so I just thought I'd share that with you. So there'll be a lot of stuff coming out. Doesn't affect us directly, but it will affect a lot of folks because once again, the vote and the taxation of it's going to be kind of interesting. So that's really all that reflected on us, so.
Thank you. It's another big project for our city and our community. At this time, I'm going to move on to, if no one has any questions for our city council reports, I'll move on to item number six oh three, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Laow Lancaster, and good evening, members of the board and the public. Just a few honors and highlights as we get started this evening. Our Palms, congratulations to Lindmar High School Varsity Palms for their first-place finish in Palms and Jazz during the state dance competitions. Kudos to the team for also earning the Be Bold Award for Exceptional Technique, Artistry, and Athleticism. Also, special thanks to the Lindmar Board of Directors who were able to join us as we invited and hosted Representatives Cindy Golding and Eric Jertie for stopping by the district on December thirteenth to discuss the board's legislative priorities and tour both Lindmar High School and Novak Elementary. Thanks also is extended to Senator Molly Donahue for visiting with me during the month of November. Some orchestra honors. Congratulations to Josh Resnickow, Lindmar High School Orchestra teacher, for being selected to serve as guest director of the statewide Iowa Junior Honors Orchestra. Another teacher honor, we'd like to give a shout out to Corey Brinkmeyer, Lindmar High School Business Education teacher and sponsor of the Roar Store, who was named as a recipient of the Jacobson Institute of K-12 Innovator Award. We just got back from, and completed our winter break, and students were welcomed at the high school with exams. So we made it through first semester exams last week, and no weather events, knock on wood, or whatever you have available. Fortunately, last week, we were notified from our Power School, our Student Information Services vendor of a cyber attack, and we have been in communication then with our families and our staff. The vendor held webinars last week, and we sent communication, like I just shared. We'll continue to share communication as we are receiving it from Power School to provide any additional information regarding remediation in the coming days. We did notify staff and students and parents today that we are resetting student passwords out of an abundance of caution. I want to give appreciation to our local media partners. We've had some press over the last month. We had a nice story that was written by the Cedar Rapids Gazette that shined a nice spotlight on our student support associate positions, and specifically Dave over at Boulder Peak. Also, KCRG provided a story here last week regarding proceeds from the Hy-Vee gas pumps coming to both Lindmar and Marion school districts. We're super appreciative of our partnership with Hy-Vee. And then both the Cedar Rapids Gazette and KCRG interviewed staff about, our high school staff, about our early explorers' experience in the former LRC building and how this experience will support our high school students partaking in the Venture program. Some couple of, another exciting thing possibly on the horizon is we are right now seeking interest from our families of future preschoolers, whether there is interest in possibly adding daycare or wraparound care at the Lynn Grove Elementary site for next school year. So, should that survey show that we have enough interest from families, we will then move forward with extending an RFP to find a vendor that would be willing to provide daycare or before and after school preschool services at Lynn Grove. Some meeting participation. It's been a busy last month with board items related to board leadership meetings, policy committee that we've heard about here recently, meeting with our legislators as well. Statewide, the Department of Ed Director Snow has recently instituted a statewide superintendent's webinar. They have been hosting since November, and it's been really informative and something new that they're trying out. So we are appreciative of the Department of Ed keeping us all abreast of the latest happenings at the Department of Ed level there and how that flows down to school districts. Grant Wood AKA hosts their monthly superintendent's meeting as well, and we appreciate that partnership. We are preparing for IASB Day on the Hill. Not only are most of us able to attend and hopefully get to meet with legislators and advocate on that day, but we'll also be sending a student group from Venture that day to highlight the great things that are happening as part of that program. We also have currently open our Indian Creek principals position, and we are moving through the hiring process with that and hope to have a recommendation for the board during the next board meeting. Recently, or we will be meeting with building principals this week as well, and have met recently with, or attended the Marion Eastside Rotary Luncheon. Just a couple of quick updates when it comes to facilities then, our projects that are ongoing around the district. The performance venue deckwork installation has begun, and the auditorium roofing installation is ongoing, weather permitting, and continuing throughout January. Most of the slab on grade concrete, concrete floors will be poured over the next few weeks. The high school indoor activities center, the design team met with the steering committee to review schematic design package and cost. Next step will be integrating a phasing schedule with financial resources to understand potential timing scenarios there. And the administration building, temporary certificate of occupancy and substantial completion was granted a few months ago, but they are working still through punch list type items throughout the building at this time. Today, we, it was a no-school day for our students, but we did have job-alike meetings with our staff today and a work day this afternoon, and we look forward to a full professional development day a week from today. And then in February, we have conferences on the horizons for all of our K-12 families. And with that, I'd take any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or seek clarity on anything that has been presented?
Amy, I do have a question about this building here.
Yes.
I know they're on their punch list stuff. This punch list has taken quite a while. I'm curious if we have any sort of realistic expectations on when they think they might finish that punch list.
Yep, I'm going to turn that over to John.
Yeah, Justin, they're still working on it here. They were here quite a bit today, so I've been in contact with them, and they understand my frustrations with not being a hundred, a hundred percent complete yet, so I think we'll see some changes here relatively shortly.
Does anyone else have any further questions or seeking clarity? If not, thank you very much for your report. I appreciate it. It seems like a lifetime ago that it was December, and here we are, two thousand twenty-five, so thank you very much. I'm going to move us forward then to item number seven hundred, our unfinished business. At this time, we have nothing listed on our agenda, so I'll move us forward to item number eight hundred, new business. I'd like to move us on to number eight oh one, approval of calendars.
I moved to approve the recommended changes to the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-five, sorry, two thousand twenty-six school year calendar and the proposed calendar for two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven as presented in Exhibits eight oh one, point one dash two.
Second? In who's second? Thank you, Melissa. All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion on these calendars as presented?
Yeah, I just want to, I know Nathan kind of leads this committee, so I just have a couple of questions or just clarifications, if I'm remembering things correctly. We align our spring break with the other districts in the metro area, correct?
Yeah.
So it's not really easy to just move it one, I mean, I appreciate the idea of getting done.
Right. Yeah, we typically align the spring break times with also what Kirkwood and the university are doing. Seems to help our kids when they're off at the same time, because we have a lot of Kirkwood-type classes. And so, yeah, every year we do this, the calendar, we always try to look at what our institutions are doing with spring break as well.
So that's a good point. If our spring break is different than Kirkwood's, any of our kids taking dual enrollment courses would be actually not getting a break because they'd still have to go to class the week that Kirkwood would still be in session, even if we weren't.
Right, correct.
Yeah, that was my only question. For me, it's a toss-up on winter break versus two days in June, so I don't have concerns there, but I did want to clarify spring break, so thank you.
Hey, hey, Nathan.
Yeah.
I appreciate the comments from Ben earlier when we, when we heard about that. That is something I flagged as well. Is that what other districts are seeing too? It's, the, what I, what I heard was that the gap between, you know, you go almost to the end of the quarter, you get a full week off, and then you have three days or so to the end of the quarter. So is that something that's unique to us, or is that something that other districts are dealing with too?
Yeah.
Just depending on how the, because the state mandates when we can start the year, so I get that.
Right, yeah, good questions, and I'm glad we had some comments about the calendar too. I mean, it's one of those things that we are really handcuffed by the state with the August twenty-third start date. And again, that state with the August 23rd start date. And again, that was passed several years ago in regards to the state fair. But if you notice on one of the calendars, I forget which one it is, we actually start on the 25th, which makes sense because the 23rd would be, yeah. So, so yes, unfortunately, that's what a lot of us are starting to do. So, you know, traditionally, when the calendar committee gets together, and we have had a longstanding kind of history of teachers that have served on the calendar committee, we always have one to two meetings per year. They take that feedback back to their buildings. It would be ideal if we could start earlier so that we could end semester by Christmas break. The other thing that we really try to look at in terms of, like, when our quarters start and end, is a somewhat balanced quarter each quarter, because we would have repeat classes, you know, at the high school and the middle school that last roughly 42 to 45 or 47 days. The reason you see imbalanced quarters on there typically in third quarter is because that's when we tend to lose days during, for weather. And so we try to keep that somewhat consistent. If we push things back, then we might have a 38-day quarter and a 52-day quarter, which really creates an imbalance if you're teaching the same content to different kids. The other thing the calendar committee has tried to do is just be consistent. We always want families to kind of have a consistent approach to the calendar and not always change things because we have a history that has worked out in the past. So that's why you see those election dates there. And we did look at the feedback for the Christmas break and moving that. Both, a lot of the feedback from the buildings was 50/50 some. This was before Christmas, by the way, I'll qualify that. Typically, everybody was like, it doesn't really matter. After we got back from break, there was a lot of positive feedback about that. So that's why you see a two-week consistent calendar for the holiday break being two weeks. I know college community is getting their calendar approved and are doing something very similar. So if we had an advocacy piece, it would be really nice if we could work on the state to allow us to start a little bit earlier, but I'm not optimistic that's going to change.
Yeah, I think the state fair tourism board has way more power than any of us.
And it's not, I mean, it's not ideal, but it's what we have to work with, so we always start from the 23rd and then start working toward that.
I will, not that I'm an elementary parent anymore, but I will congratulate all of our elementary teachers. The next two years, Halloween is on a Friday and a Saturday, so there will be no day-after-Halloween sugar craze at the elementary schools.
Nathan, I was going to reflect on how the election day where we, where since the schools and the buildings are being used as like satellite, I don't know if satellite locations is the right word, but as a place for folks to vote, that it made sense, and I think it makes sense to close the buildings so we have less traffic and less chaos and more security. And then I know, I see now Monday is a no-school day as well, and I'm wondering if that also kind of pushed things back. Like, I'm looking at November and between the Thanksgiving at the end of the month and the election day kind of closings, that makes things tight. Not that there's a lot we can do about it, but since that is kind of a more recent change, I would imagine there would have been some effect on, I mean, that's two additional days right there, but...
Yeah, that wasn't that much of a change because we actually had those two days. They were just in other spots.
Okay.
And the reason we did back-to-back days is just for our attendance purposes. If we come back on a Monday and we're off on Tuesday, we tend to see a significant drop in attendance on days like that. So that's why we put two days back-to-back there.
Yeah.
And you see other two days, well, I thought there were some. Maybe they're not in the 25, 26.
It, it makes sense, and I guess, if anything, I wanted to highlight it just to kind of underscore another
Yeah.
complication in the process of trying to shake this out and, you know, hard, hard to find a perfect, it's, solution here, so just appreciate.
The calendar committee would love to have us start after Labor Day, take three weeks at every holiday, and end before Memorial Day, but I haven't quite figured out a way to squeeze all those days in yet to make that happen. And, you know, as another reminder, I would just say, you know, we're contracted with our teachers to have 191 days, so we have to work with the hours requirement that we have, starting on the 23rd, and then make sure we get all of our teacher contract days in there as much as possible. And obviously, a way to maximize that is to have kids in seats with our teachers during that time, so.
But I appreciate the comments as well about the calendar that we received tonight and the productive discussion, and it's hard because they all seem like good ideas
Right.
and tough choices, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussion on this motion at this time?
Yeah, just one piece to add real quick, is I don't remember seeing it on past calendars, and so I saw it on this one, and I really appreciated it. Just a little note about the makeup days for cancellations on, on where that is. I don't know if you guys could add like a little asterisk or anything like that that would direct them back to the website or how they would know, you know, if that were to apply, but I just, I appreciated putting that out there so that hopefully we can help set some expectations. That was nice. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment, and we see it on the 2025-26 calendar, not yet on the 2026-27, right here? Oh, June makeup. Oh, it's, we just, that's because we're just going to tack it all on the end. Oh, lovely. All right. Let's go ahead. If there's any further discussion? Any comments? All right. We are, have a motion to approve the recommended changes to the 2025 school year calendar and the proposed calendar for 2026-27 as presented in Exhibits 801-1 through 2. Is it, all in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2025-26 at-risk dropout prevention modified supplemental amount application in the amount of $1,466,142, and for this amount to be submitted to the school budget review committee for consideration of increased spending authority.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, and it has been seconded and approval at the at-risk dropout prevention rate MSA application, Exhibit number 802.1. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Just for clarification, this is money that we are submitting to get back to us, right?
This is spending authority, so think about this as an increase to your credit card limit and not the cash to go with it. So this goes to the school budget review committee. So how this is figured is your district cost per pupil times your certified enrollment times our 2.5%, which is our maximum for our at-risk dropout programs. Remember, there's other districts in the state that have up to 5%, but our maximum is set at two and a half. So legislatively, as kind of Nathan said earlier, you know, that's something I know we've discussed many times, is to be able to have that equitable across the state.
So we're asking for authority to spend this money, but they won't give us the extra money.
I just wanted clarification.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussion or questions for clarification? If not, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a vote on the 801, approval at the at-risk dropout prevention MSA application. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no. The motion carries. Number eight, item number 803, approval of bus purchases, Exhibit 803.1.
Motion to approve the purchase of three Bloomberg gasoline 60-passenger buses and one Bloomberg gasoline Lyft bus from school bus sales for a total of $578,011.
Second. We have a motion and a second to, for the approval of bus purchases, Exhibit 803.1. Is there any discussion on this item?
John, I saw a note in the bottom that just said that in, in the bids, that they're expecting more engine options in the 2025, because we were thinking about potentially trying to go more to propane and save some fuel costs. Is that still what we're looking for?
We're hopeful. So kind of what we're, what we found out now on these buses is one manufacturer, we seem to have more issues with the bus itself, not the engine, but the bus, and the other manufacturer doesn't have a propane option yet. So what we would really like is the propane in the bus that has suited us well, but that's not an option yet. We're told that's coming in the near future. So this year, Brian and his team and myself discussing that, just elected to say, we need some buses, we have an aging fleet, we need to stay on our replacement schedule. How do we do that as cheaply as possible? And that's why you see the gasoline buses here.
Is this, is it, and these buses, these are funded through Pebble, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so this is another one of those, just recurring costs that we've got that the voters approved for us. Thank you.
Yep.
And a quick question. Could you just clarify, because we list that the three buses are 60-passenger buses, I'm just wondering, for the Lyft bus, just because we do it for the other three, do you happen to have the number of, or the capacity or additional detail?
Yep, I can get back to you on that. I don't know that off the top of my head. They are smaller and they have the capacity for the wheelchairs, so as far as other students and seats on those buses, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can let you know.
Yeah, I mostly just was like, okay, they're smaller, they're wheelchair-accessible, just a little more detail to enhance the...
59.
59. Thank you.
It was, I'm sorry, it was in the exhibit, correct?
Yeah, I was just, just on the agenda for consistency. That's why I was thinking it up.
Group effort there. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion by Melissa and a second by Laura for the approval of bus purchases. May all those who are in favor vote yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 804, approval of SUV purchases, Exhibit 804.1.
Motion to approve the purchase of two Chevy Suburban LS SUVs from Lynch Chevrolet for a total of $124,449.
Second. I'm going to go with Britt on the second. We have a motion to, for the approval of SUV purchases. Motion was made by Laura and second by Britt. Is there any discussion?
So this is, this came out of the Finance and Audit Committee as a request from some of our coaches to be able to have some smaller vehicles with four-by-four in order to transport teams, considering that state laws regulate the types of vans that we can have and the market suggesting, the overall van market suggesting that those are not easy to get. And so these are some more vehicles that we have to transport our kids who are doing all kinds of activities so that they don't have to be in a bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussion on this motion? If not, I'm going to ask for a vote for the approval of SUV purchases, Exhibit 804.1. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 805, the acceptance and completion of final payment, Exhibit 805.1.
Motion to approve the acceptance of completion and issue final payment of $6,237.60 to ForSure Roofing for the Westfield Elementary Roof Replacement Project.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve the acceptance and completion of the issue of the final payment for the purchase of Westfield Roof Replacement. At this time, is there, Melissa made the motion and Laura made the second. Is there any discussion? Without any discussion, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a vote. All those in favor, please vote yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. The motion has carried. Item number 806.
Motion to set a public hearing for 5:00 p.m. on Monday, January 27, 2025, in the boardroom of the Linmar Administration Building regarding the plans and specifications for the Excelsior Middle School Roof Replacement Project.
Second. I'm going to give Barry the second on that one. We have a motion for, to set the public hearing for Monday, January 27 at 5:00 p.m., with a motion was made by Laura, and it was seconded by Barry. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 807, approval of open house enrollment requests.
Motion to approve the open enrollment request as presented.
Is there a second, please? Second. The motion is presented by Britt and seconded by Melissa. Is there any discussion at this time? Without any discussion, I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor, vote yes, please, to the approval of open enrollment requests as presented. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, the motion carries. We need, we move now to item number 808, the first reading of policy recommendations, Exhibit 808.1.
I make a motion to approve the first reading of the policy recommendations as presented in Exhibit 808.1.
Second. Melissa, did you get the second? Thank you. We have a motion for the first reading of policy recommendations by Barry and a second by Melissa. Is there discussion?
I just have a question on policy 602.1. I'm guessing Nathan is going to be the best person to answer it, and I apologize, I didn't email you ahead of time. I just want clarification that we're changing the fine arts and the foreign language units from three and four to both two because of a state law change and not because of what we're offering.
Yes, correct. Those would be the Chapter 12 legislative changes that they made, so that's just updating that.
So our policy just is reflecting the bare minimum required by law, but we're not cutting years three and four of foreign language or anything like that.
Correct. Yeah, we still have the same offerings, just different requirements.
All right, just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any other questions about this?
In the policy 801.6, capital assets, I see that we've, are taking the, the feedback to add the word "school" in front of the word "district" to many of the instances, and I completely support that. I'm curious if somebody could do that here in post-production just to, because a bunch of the other policies don't have that written in.
801.6 is the one that he's referring to?
Yep. So just, for example, policy 1,005.5, I see it like on the, on the second, on the second page, there's a couple of spots where it is. And there, I think I found a couple of those. Minor stuff, no reason to object, but just wanted to point that out before we make it final, in case that needed to be changed.
So for clarification, what you're requesting is not to change the policies themselves, but to have clarification so that each one says Linmar Community School District. Is that correct?
Yes.
Consistently throughout the document?
However it's referred, just to make it consistent throughout all the documents.
You're not saying add Linmar Community School. So I see on, you're talking about the addition of the word "school"?
Correct, just the, just the singular word "school."
I think it's semantics, and I don't understand why we're adding it to this one if it's district everywhere else, but it should be consistent. But I'd rather just not add "school" to this one policy than to go through every single policy we have and add the word "school" before the word "district." District seems, it's their school policies, it seems like it's obvious that it's the "school." So I agree it should be consistent. I just don't see it to be necessary to change it in every other policy if it's only being added in this one.
John, do you know why, is that, is that anything related to audit procedures or anything like that for why IASB might have added the word "school" into this particular one? I know this was an IASB change.
Right, yeah, no, no idea. I'm not sure.
Because it does later go back to using "district" later in the, in the same policy, so.
Maybe we could get clarification before the second reading, and if we don't need to add the word for legal reasons, let's just continue our consistency with the district will.
So if I'm, just want to summarize, it's not the motions or each policy themselves, it's the clarification of wording and just making sure that there is a cause or no cause to why we said what we did, "district" or slash "school." Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And we would, your recommendation for our discussion would be that that clarification would be made prior to the second reading. Is that also correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Would, would then you be willing then to approve the first reading at this time, knowing that we would make those clarifications before the second reading? That also means you would hold us all accountable that we actually made that change so that when the second reading came up, that we, we didn't say, oh, yeah, don't forget. So let's, we have our homework to do between those two readings. I'm just asking, as board members, we hold each other accountable for that correction or clarification.
Sounds good to me. That would be the policy committee meeting.
Thank you, Melissa. You have your work cut out. All right. Is there any other discussion? Without any further discussion, this is the first reading of policy recommendations with Exhibit 808.1. I have a motion from Barry, a second from Melissa. We've had our discussion. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. The motion has carried. At this time, item number 809, we have the approval of the Board Operations Manual, Exhibit 801.
Motion to approve the Board of Operations Manual as discussed.
Oh, wait, sorry.
Oh wait, sorry, just kidding. President Lael Lancaster's going to facilitate a review.
We're going to have a conversation first and hopefully, that's okay. I'm still, yeah, we're good. At this time, we're, the facilitation of the conversation is, is there conversation to have? And have you had a chance to do your homework? Hopefully, yes, because you're very due diligent kind of group. And I just want to make sure that there's nothing out here that would prohibit us from moving forward. I would, do want you to look at your table of contents, please. And just a reminder that this is our guiding tools on how we will not only, each one of you was elected officially, each one of you took an oath to this office. This is how we agree we will behave and will pass the needs of this district forward with motions, actions, but also reminder of who we are to one another as a committee and as a team so that we bring our best self to one another when we do these things. There's also a clarification on, on some of our appendixes. Is that correct, Superintendent?
Um, I don't think that's necessary tonight.
All right, got it. And then we have some other things. I just want to make sure that you've had a chance. This is a document down the right that, be familiar with these things because you are being asked, hey, this is our board of all the policies, of all the hundreds and all the other things. This is something to be familiar with. You will, it is our guiding tool. Do I have any further discussion?
Yeah, just a reminder too, that as we discussed the board member social media engagement policy, we had a lot of nice conversation with Siobhan Snyder from ISB at the last, oh gosh, back, was it November, work session? And really, we're thinking about where particular language should land. And so if you look to page 11, some of the earlier language that board members had presented and various attorneys had approved going into the policy, we've moved into the Board Operations Manual instead of into the policy. So that's the major change for this year moving forward in your Board Operations Manual.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other conversations that you feel that we should? This is not discussion after the motion. This is actually just having a conversation about what we've all going to say yes to. If there's no further conversation, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the Board Operation Manuals as discussed.
I do have one question, sorry.
Is it for discussion time or do you want to? Go for it.
Wait, um, sorry. I'll wait till after the motion.
Okay. Justin, you want to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion to approve the Board Operations Manual as discussed.
Awesome, thank you, Justin. What's our, who's got a second?
I got you.
Melissa's got a second. Hey, Justin, do you have a question that you would like to discuss?
Yeah, um, is this, so, so on, on the back, on page 12, we signed this? Where, is that posted someplace that we've signed this? And, okay, so if we, if somebody weren't to sign this, would that be posted as well then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So clarification for those who are, do not have this document in front of us. On page 12, we all signed saying that we do agree to these, to the ways that we will not only conduct ourselves into the public, but also with one another.
Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, we have a motion on the table by Justin and a second by Melissa on, to approve the Board Operations Manual as discussed. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no? The motion carries. Everybody, turn the page. Ready? All right. At this time, we are going to have item number 900, our Consent Agenda.
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the removal of Daniel Patterson from the Item 901 Personnel Co-Extracurricular Staff Resignations.
Second.
Who's second?
Madat.
Madat, thank you. We have a motion for the Consent Agenda presented by Britt and seconded by Madat. Is there any questions on the information in the Consent Agenda or discussion?
Just want to congratulate, we've got a retirement. Rebecca Blocker is retiring, Linmar Social Studies teacher.
Outstanding. Thank you for noticing that. If there's no further discussion at this time, I ask for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda as presented, please say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, say no? The Consent Agenda has been approved. We are all the way to item 1,000. Board Calendar and Communications, everybody. Please note that these calendar events, please get them on your personal calendars, whether it be your phone or whatever, and want to make sure that we get them all there. Some of these have weather, I mean, some of these may be weather sensitive, so please keep in mind your team that you work with. DEI on January 20th at 5:00 p.m. January 22nd, Finance and Audit at 8:30 a.m. here in the ballroom. Oh, boardroom. I just noticed, uh, ballroom, jeez. I just noticed, we just moved DEI to also on regular boardroom. Thank you very much. Marion City Council, I have Thomas going on January 23rd at 5:30. January 27th at 5:00, we have our Board of Directors meeting. On January 28th, we have our Day on the Hill as a team, as many of us who can make it. That is in Des Moines. February 3rd, 1:00, Policy Committee. February 5th, 4:15, CTE. February 8th, uh, February 6th at 8:30 in the morning, Finance Audit. February 6th, 12:00, Lynn County Conference Board. Is that you? Thank you, Barry. I remembered that. Woo-hoo, thank you, Barry. February 6th at 5:30, we have the Marion City Council. We need a representative to go to that.
I can go.
Thank you. Madat will go to that. Thank you very much. February 10th, 5:00, we will all be here with bright shiny faces. And then February 13th, 8:30, we have a board visit to Westfield Elementary. February 17th at 5:00, DEI here in the boardroom, not ballroom, although dancing is lovely. February 20th, we have another city council meeting at 5:30 in City Hall in Marion. Who would like to attend that?
I can.
Thank you very much, Laura. Thomas will go to that. We have then another board meeting at, on February 24th at 5:00 here in the boardroom. Then we have an early dismissal, just a reminder. We have, on the 25th, we have then a Finance Audit Committee. On the 27th, 8:30, two-hour early dismissal. And then a professional day on the 27th and 28th. 27th, 28th.
27th is early dismissal.
Yeah, and 28th, I, two hour early and then a day off. Yes.
President Lael Lancaster?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to also highlight that today is the first day of the Iowa Legislative Session. And as Director Foss and myself are the legislative liaisons, just wanted to, you know, do that part of educating everyone and keeping everyone up to date on how the session progresses, bills of note and just that activity. So I guess yay for the first day of the session and I guess keep you posted as we go.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that work and on behalf of the district that the two of you are willing to do. Thank you very much. For some of us, it's actually quite interesting, so we, we love it, but good. Thank you for having a listening presence for that. Is there any other information on our calendaring at this time?
Apologize in advance for sending you guys any messages because it would be hard for me to let go.
Thank you in advance.
I move to adjourn at 5:53 p.m.
Barry moves to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, Barry made the motion and Madat made the second. Is there any discussion about adjourning at 5:58?
5:33.
5:53? If not, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Record.